Good evening, everyone, and thank you for tuning in to the Limington Select Board Meeting for May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, the meeting was called to order at seven P M. And I will look for an approval of the meeting minutes for May ninth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for May ninth.
And I second that. Any, um...
Any discussion?
Discussion's the word. Thank you. Here seeing none. All in favor? Would you like to do the approval of warrants?
Sure. Um, we got payroll warrant forty-six in the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-four cents, and one hundred and twelve dollars and one cent for a total of sixty. I will second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we'll just run down a little bit of this.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Jason, you want to?
Yeah, I can. That's fine. Uh, Bureau of Motor Vehicles was seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, Central Main Power was eighteen hundred and nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Eastern Mapping Services, which is the tax maps, were eighteen hundred dollars. Uh, MEMIC, Workers' Compensation Insurance, was three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, ninety-one cents. Uh, Main Municipal Association, the town's retirement plan, is twenty-one thousand, five ninety-nine, eighty. And Parker Appraisal Company Assessment was twenty-eight hundred dollars.
I make a motion that we accept. We already did that, right? This is just the discussion part of it. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. It passes. Um, purchase order requests. Very many of those. How about if I do them?
Sure.
Uh, Public Works Department, a request to pay Napa Auto Parts starter assembly ten gallons D E Norton and twenty-four brake parts cleaner, five hundred, thirty-three dollars and seventy-two cents.
I make a motion, we accept the Public Works Department's order request.
I second that. All those in favor? Fire and EMS, a request to pay Rich Patton out for a national registry exam, a hundred and sixty dollars. And a request to pay sleepers for two chainsaws and a leaf blower, fifteen hundred and six dollars.
I make a motion, we accept the fire and EMS warrants.
I second that. All those in favor? Municipal, a request to pay tri-state flags for veteran grave markers and flags, one thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and sixty cents.
I make a motion that we, uh, accept the municipal, uh, warrant.
I second that. All those in favor? Parks and Rec, a request to pay Visa for April vacation camp trip to Sea Dogs, six hundred dollars. A request to pay Sleepers Market lunch for Coffee Social and Guest Speaker, a hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I make a motion to accept Parks and Rec purchase orders.
And I second that. All in favor? Code Enforcement, a request to pay W B Mason for office supplies, fifty-four dollars and eighty-six cents.
Make a motion that we accept the Code Enforcement purchase order.
I second that. All in favor? Planning Board, a request to pay Portland Press Herald for legal ads, a hundred and ninety-two dollars.
I make a motion to accept the Planning Board's purchase orders.
I'll second that. All in favor? Old and new business. Uh, we will be having, um, an executive session next Thursday, uh, for one M R S A, four oh five, six A for a personnel matter from four o'clock to five o'clock in the afternoon. So, we are open, uh, from two to four to the public, and then, um, four to five will be have, will be in executive session. We, um, do we have anyone in the office this afternoon?
Um, I spoke with, uh, we did have Madison in.
Oh, yes, before I got in. Thank you.
Yeah, no, Madison came in and, uh, dropped off a paper for the final, um, uh, installment of the, for the grant that he's put in forward for the generator at the Old Town Hall. Um, so that paperwork is being, um, submitted, and this is the final. The next step will be the full approval for it. So, it'll, it'll be good to, uh, to have that going. Um, do you, let me see here, what else? Um, we will be going forward, we will be setting up a schedule for the department heads to speak at these select board meetings. I know it, you know, we're gonna set up a, a, a schedule so we can give them a heads up two or three weeks in ta- advance so they can come and answer any questions for the public when they're here. And we'll announce ahead of time whether it'll be, uh, the Code Enforcement or Public Works or Fire EMS, um, something we wanna make happen here. Um, the weekly updates for the Parks and Rec, um, everything, they, they did the Mo-Mo-Doe cleanup, was a success. They, uh, they had over thirty volunteers. Beach is looking great. Public Works graded and cleaned up the road on Friday, and Sean brought the chipper back down on Saturday to help with all the brushing that the volunteers, uh, picked up. Um, the Old Town Hall use, the scouts are Tuesday nights, story theater, Storybook Theater is Friday, and Saturdays are available for rental for birthday parties. Uh, weekly programs, the before and after care at Monday through Friday. Uh, Coffee Social is Wednesdays, nine thirty to twelve. Uh, they host the Hollis, they hosted the Hollis Senior Group for a luncheon, and guest speaker was Dave Yates, a wildlife biologist that studies bats. Um, Track is Tuesday and Friday. They have thirty-seven children enrolled. Uh, Friday, they attended their first track meet in Hollis, and the te- the team did amazing. Uh, T-Ball's Saturday, um, our Saturdays, they had eleven children. Music and Movement is Wednesdays at ten A M., and Pickle Ball is Tuesdays and Fridays. Do you, you wanna continue on, or I can?
Let me do this first, and then you wanna do the ordinances?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, the, we'll, we'll, we will be having a public hearing, um, here, uh, May thirtieth, and it's, uh, we're going to be addressing, uh, it's gonna be an informational public hearing for the ordinances that the Planning Board is gonna be putting forth, and Jason will have more information on that in just a minute. Um, they will be talking about, um, an ATV access. Um, a landowner had shut off some land down on Boothby Road.
Yes.
And so, the ATV has asked to be able to utilize Axelson and Boothby just to come from, uh, one part of the, uh, trail to another part of the trail. So, we're going to just be able to have public hearing on that, uh, let the people know, you know, that if the ATVs are gonna be on that road, it's the reason why, but that's gonna be, uh, part of that. Um, and also, they're gonna be bringing up, uh, a public hearing on the purchase of the gym from the Limington Academy trustees. We've talked about that on air a few times. It's going to be a public hearing for people to come and voice, uh, their opinions on all of it. Uh, this is all in conjunction with the June eleventh vote. So, uh, the school budget will be voted on June eleventh, and they were here presenting their budget on April twenty-fifth, if you wanna go back and look at that. If you, you know, didn't see it that night, I believe that is, uh, available on YouTube, and you'll be able to see that. Uh, but it's all getting all this information together, um, having these hearings and, and making sure that the public knows what all this is about for that June eleventh vote. We say June, you know, and it's like, huh, that's gonna be very soon, and it seemed like so, you know, such a long ways away, but it's coming upon us quickly. So, if you wanted to go over those...
No, I, uh, I can touch, I just touch base on the other departments if you want me to. Um, talked with Craig this afternoon. Um, during, uh, coming up, we will be having, uh, a administrative fee added to the permitting, um, through the Code Enforcement. So, basically, uh, any basic permits right now, talking with Craig, um, if it's just a basic permit, the, the, the twenty-five dollar fee will not be added. Um, if it's anything above and beyond that, they will be adding the administration fee because of all the paperwork. That's, um, they've, you know, in the case that somebody does back out, at least they get a little bit of compensation for the hour or two they've put into it. Um, they also will be, uh, they, during the next meeting advised, the public, yeah, he wanted me to advise about this fee just to give people a heads up. Um, it's, it's just to benefit the town overall, the amount of time and they put in. Um, he also wanted me to touch base. Uh, Ju- uh, Judy, his new assistant, has cleaned out and refiled all the backlog of permits from twenty-one and twenty-two. So, she's really, she gone to town at getting him straightened out. Um, Fire EMS, uh, number of calls to service this week was eleven. Month to date's thirteen, year to date's two hundred and seventy-one. Uh, there's been two fires, uh, and nine EMS calls. Uh, the schedule was full this week. The EMS Director is still out sick. Dawn, we wish her the best. Um, trainings, uh, in-house Wednesday night, they met and started stripping Truck Nine to prepare it for sale. Um, Tuesday night, Lieutenant Rule and Emo had attended a Board of Directors meeting for the York County Firefighters Association. Um, uh, and no real issues. Special notes, they are, they're currently twelve calls behind last year's May twelve, uh, last year, May, month to date, and eighteen calls ahead of last year's year-to-date. So, they've been picking up. Um, got an update from Sean at Public Works. Uh, they've spent, uh, been able to catch up on most of the cleanup caused by the April storm. Uh, Dole's Ridge Road has been cleared. Uh, the section of road between Tufts Lane and Limerick Town Line has been cleared from the ro- from the road in places on the shoulders. Um, the section, let me see here, try to get through it. Culverts were also checked on the road to make sure debris will not cause any problems with stormwater drainage. Tucker Road Route twenty-five end has been cleared, trimmed, chipped, both sides of the road and, uh, end of the gravel section. Gravel section cleared of all low-hanging limbs and ready for road grading. Uh, two school bus turnarounds have been cleared of all limbs. Uh, last weekend, they were able to assist in brush removal for the camp as they, uh, they had several people helping during the cleanup day. Last week, they cleared number one road, Mo-Mo-Doe Roads from trees, debris, and other limb obstructions. Uh, Beach Road was graded. Parking lot was cleaned and raked. The boat launch area is cleaned. Um, they have a few more signs for the beach and ramp areas that were damaged over the winter that will be repaired this week and installed. Um, he has contacted Spectrum and let them know that the conduit is in and ready for the cable install. Um, he did replace the flagpole rope out front here this morning. Um, still having, uh, he still needs help with our repole, repair of the flagpole rope at the Old Town Hall. Let me see. Over the weekend, he plans on picking up materials needed, uh, for the transfer of station attendant building to build the step to make it easier for people there as well. Um, I think that's it for the departments. Um, as far as the, the ordinances go, Planning Board's done very, a lot of work putting into these, uh, ordinances and, and just brushing up. Once again, can't stress this enough. These are just tightening all the ordinances up. They're, uh, just clarifying, there's really no major changes in these ordinances, nor will they cost the town any more money. Um, ordinance, uh, question two, uh, shall amendments to the ordinance entitled zoning ordinance be enacted? Um, this is basically correct typos and any incorrect references, which basically were typos, uh, adds clarification information on the notice of decisions that the Planning Board issues once applications have been finally approved. Um, on land use table, it corrects the, under the medical marijuana production, the application has to be approved by the Planning Board, not the Code Enforcement Officer. And, uh, and it's conditional use permit in which the C E O cannot approve. So, it's just, once again, um, bringing it into, into state statute. Uh, and it brings the ordinance into compliance with the state law. Question three, shall an amendment to the zoning ordinance entitled Extraction Industry be enacted? Um, this one, they've put a lot of time in over the last few years. Um, it, all gravel pits currently are grandfathered from these changes until they are operation, if, until they stop their operation or they open or expand their pit. Uh, does not have any impact on smaller pits unless they expand significantly and have to comply with the main D E P requirements. Basically, this is just a, a more of a clarification of the main department of, you know, the main D E P's rules and regulations. Um, it clarifies reclamation standards when a pit is closed. Uh, requires plans to be drawn by a licensed main professional engineer. Uh, clarifies language so no one, so everyone knows what to expect, such as buffer strips, lighting, rehabilitate, re- rehabilitation of the pits. Uh, requires location of seasonal high water table using, uh, boring holes or test pits. Requires a hydrological study for all new or expanding pits to have at least two monitoring wells for every ten acres. Um, determines the distance that must be maintained from wells and residential water supply. Prior to opening new pits, it requires a performance guarantee acceptable to the Select Board. Um, increases liability insurance coverage, that used to be a million, now up to two. Today's day and age, I mean, the million, I think, was ten years ago, and two million is just a drop in the hat to today's day and age. And, uh, brings ordinances into compliance with state law. Basically, it's tightening, uh, all the verbiage up, and it just protecting the people's wells. The, it is, it's ultimately looking out for the people of the town. Um, it's not adding any more money, it's not costing anybody anything. Um, it's just, it, it's really helping the people of the town. If you have a pit open up beside you and, you know, do you want your well damaged, it, it's just protection for that. Um, question four, shall an amendment be, shall the, shall an amendment to the subdivision ordinance entitled Fire Protection and Public Safety be enacted? Uh, this clarifies the distance needed between the buildings and the water supply. Uh, eliminates, uh, contradictive, contradiction within the ordinance. This, once again, verbiage, the stuff that was in there part four was kind of misleading. Um, eliminate, uh, clarifies ordinance language as to meaning of certain procedures and further protects the town from liability. Um, it concentrates on cisterns and how they are to be constructed more clearly defined. Uh, this is a much-needed issue, a much, much-needed rewrite to, uh, for significance problems with the developers. I mean, we've had, we have some issues in the town right now that we've been working with, with the cistern, and it just, it's to protect the person that's buying or putting a house in this development. It's, you gotta have a water supply, and it's gotta be up to code. Um, the, where was I? Defines responsibility for maintenance of cisterns and dry hydrants by homeowners association. So, you know, in the case of a subdivision, that they just don't write it off. Okay, it's done and built, but now nobody maintains it, and, you know, five years down the road, it's plugged, it won't be usable. Um, it's just, it's there, once again, a protection for the people of the town. Uh, question five, shall an amendment to the zoning ordinance entitled Flood Plane Management be enacted? Uh, the short of this one, i- it's gonna be a FEMA mandate regardless. The problem, if we don't adopt this, or we don't pass this, um, it will ultimately, it will ultimately affect the town and the townspeople. Anybody in flood zone may not receive any compensation and may lose their flood insurance. And, uh, and, and it also may, uh, we may lose money in the case of we have a natural flood disaster, and it takes out a bridge, culvert, uh, we won't be eligible for any FEMA money. Um, the existing policies will still be in effect, but will not be renewed upon expir- expiration. So, if this doesn't pass, and you have flood insurance, it, uh, they may not renew you. Um, the town must adopt this, uh, policy by July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, there are currently six families in town with FEMA policies. So, uh, those six families could suffer from this if it, if, you know, if it doesn't pass. And, uh, and it also could affect future sales of homes in the town. Once again, there is no added cost to the town. It's not costing anybody, taxpayers, any money. Um, it's just a, uh, it's to follow suit with FEMA. In fact, I've been to the, a lot of the Planning Board meetings with this, uh, and talking to the, uh, the FEMA Director. It may, i- it's taken a, what used to be a ten-foot buffer and brought it within a foot. So, somebody that may be in a flood zone may be out of flood zone now 'cause they, with the technology out there nowadays, they've been able to really focus down on their flood zone areas. So, I mean, it's, it's just a benefit all the way around. Uh, question six, shall an amendment to the zoning ordinance entitled L D two thousand and three be enacted? Once again, um, this is a main, uh, state mandated law. Town must adopt by mid-July. Um, this, Limington not seriously affected as we do not have public water or sewer. Uh, basically, it allows up to three dwellings, uh, dwelling units per lot. This could be the original house or an accessory building, like an in-law apartment, and another house. If you're adding another house on the lot, not an accessory dwelling, but another house, um, if you are in the required zone of district, you would have to double that size. So, in, in the, I, I think in the center town, it's a, an acre and a half, you would have to have three acres. And outside, you, if you have to have three acres for your minimum lot size, you would have to have six acres. That would be to put a second house on the lot. Um, what that's allowing is, you, you don't, you don't have to, you won't have to have a second driveway. You won't have to have double the frontage, um, but you will still have to meet all the setback requirements. Um, once again, it's just, it's the state's mandate to try to help with, uh, with the housing process and prod- problem we have here. Um, tiny homes under this are allowed as well, and, uh, you know, that, it's, it's listed down on their, uh, their requirements as well in the, in the state statute. But that is the, that's the, that's the bullet points that you're gonna see and hear in the next few weeks. It will be in the paper coming up this, this following week. Um, it's just to try, we're trying to get it out to the people of the town as much as possible to understand that these are, uh, I, I know it's, it's, you walk into the booth and you see these, and you don't know, so you just automatically go for no 'cause you don't wanna spend money, and that's not the case here. There's, this is not a money thing. It's, uh, we're really trying to get it out there. It's, it's only a protection of the town and, and the townspeople, more so than anything. That's why we've been so avid on pushing this and getting it out in the public for you to make your own choice, but just trying to get you to understand the, the, the questions exactly. So...
So, there isn't any...
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Jason. Um, we didn't, uh, announce this last week, but we did a couple of weeks ago about the senior citizen, uh, free turkey dinner at, uh, Bonny Eagle High School cafeteria. That's tomorrow night at four-thirty. Um, and the dinner will be served by students and administrators. Um, and the dinner will be served by students and administrators, so, you know, go to that if you can. Uh, if you can RSVP to Sarah at two oh seven, nine two nine, two three one two, that would be great, uh, to let them know that you are coming so they can set your plate for you. Um, I announced last week about how easy it was to get to the news bulletins that are being posted on the, uh, Limington website, and I said that it was the information tab, and that's not correct. Um, if you go to limington.org, you come right up to, it says, "Welcome to the Town of Limington." Um, right at the top, it says, "News," so that's the correct tab to go to. Um, that news tab is where we are putting in, you know, the flyers on, um, you know, like the, the burn permits. Anything that's over and above, we're just trying to get information out to everyone. It's on the news tab. Um, and speaking of burn permits, it's just a good thing to remind people to go on that website uh, in order to see if the, uh, town is actually issuing burn permits that day. It's, uh, nine o'clock in the morning, and after is when you will, uh, see the, uh, okay, that it, uh, that it's not, uh, high, uh, fire danger or above. If it's low or moderate, you can get, um, a fire, a burning permit. Uh, we have our firefighters on the ready, um, to help and assist if it's, if it's necessary. Um, here is just a couple more things. Um, if I remember correctly, we got a, uh, an email that the Planning Board normally meets on the third, on the first and third Mondays at seven. I believe they are not meeting on the twentieth this week, uh, next Monday, but they are meeting on the twenty-seventh. So, just wanna put that out there to let people know. Um, I'm sure the Planning Board has been announcing it, but I recall an email that went out to us, so I wanted to make sure that was, uh, in the informational bulletin this week. Um, everyone knows that the transfer station hours are Saturday and Sunday from nine to four, and Wednesday, twelve to four, and you need a sticker attached to your windshield for the disposal of, of all items unless you are just going to the swap shop. Uh, General Assistance Office is open on Wednesdays from nine to eleven, and you can get your applications here at the Town's Clerk Office during normal business hours. Applications must be filled out and accompanied with supporting documentation and signed, um, and then they are reviewed. So, and I believe Jason mentioned the Parks and Rec Cards and Coffee at the Old Town Hall. That is really a great group. Uh, they're doing a good job of bringing in speakers and, and other, uh, groups to talk and have meeting times. Just get together and socialize. So, make sure that, um, if you can, that you get there Wednesdays from nine thirty to eleven thirty.
Thank you, Tammy. Um, with nothing else here, it's open to the public. If anybody here has any questions, comments, concerns, wants to say hi, no, nobody? In that situation, then, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
We are adjourned at seven.